Okay, welcome to the March 30th, 2017 meeting of the Little Rock Planning Commission. We'll have roll call, please.
Chairman Berry.
Here.
Vice Chair Bubas.
Here.
Commissioner Binham.
Here.
Commissioner Cox.
Here.
Commissioner Dillon.
Here.
Commissioner Finney.
Here.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Here.
Commissioner Leahy.
Here.
Commissioner Latour.
Here.
Commissioner May.
Here.
And Commissioner Stebbins.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay. Thank you. Do we hear approval of the minutes of the February 16th, 2017 meeting?
So moved.
Those approve of the minutes of the February 16th, 2017 meeting, raise your right hand. Those opposed, bow like sign. Minutes are approved. Okay, let's do the presentation of the consent agenda, please.
Following is the consent agenda for the Little Rock Planning Commission. Planning rezoning conditional use hearing of March 30, 2017. You have one item on consent withdrawal. Item B, file number Z-8737B, Davis Mini Warehouse Conditional Use Permit, 8222 Stagecoach Road. On March 13th, the applicant requested withdrawal of this CUP application. The item was refiled as a planned development. Staff recommends approval of the withdrawal request. Next, you have three items on consent deferral. Item 1, G-23465, the plat and right-of-way abandonments generally south of I-440 and east and north of Springer Boulevard. Item 1.1, LU-172401, a land use plan amendment in the College Station Sweet Home Planning District from residential low to park open space northwest of the East 38th-West Line Street intersection from industrial to mining along the east side of State Highway 365 at King Road. And item 1.2, Z-9202, rezoning from R-2, R-3, and OS to OS and M generally south of Interstate 440 and east and north of Springer Boulevard. On March 28th, the applicant submitted a letter to staff requesting that items 1, 1.1, and 1.2 be deferred to the May 11th, 2017 agenda. Staff supports that request. You'll need a bylaw waiver in order to accept the request for deferral being less than five business days prior to today's meeting.
Given that at this time, I would like to call Meg Johnston to give a statement on those particular items to be deferred.
Thank you so much. I'm Meg Johnston. I'm with Mitchell Williams Law Firm. We represent 3M. Today here with me are Marty Green, who's the Environmental Health and Safety and Plant Engineering Manager for 3M Plant, and Scott Foster, who's outside surveyor. We're requesting deferral because of the concerns of 3M's neighbors. We understand from multiple calls we've received that there's a significant confusion about this project. So, we're going to hold a community meeting for our neighbors to explain the project. We're going to send out a notice of it to all of our, the people we gave notice of the rezoning were required to, to the College Station Residents Association, and to anyone else who has provided their name on a green card today. They're going to provide us with those names. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Monty.
Continuing with consent agenda, we have the items on consent approval. First is item A, Z-8551A, Pippin's Adult and Child Daycare Conditional Use Permit, 3819 Baseline Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested CUP subject to the following conditions: compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in Sections 4, 5, and 6 of the Agenda staff report; signage is to be limited to a single ground managed sign not to exceed four feet by six feet in area and six feet in height; all parking and driveways are to be paved and designed to comply with city code requirements; and compliance with all applicable building codes, fire codes, and state codes for conversion of this structure to accommodate the proposed use. Item number 2, Z-3051B, a rezoning from C-1 to C-4, 3412, 3414 Maple Valley Pike. Staff recommends approval of the requested C-4 rezoning. Item 3, Z-3371-3Bs, rezoning from C-3 to C-4 southeastern corner of Colonel Glenn Plaza Loop and David O'Donnell Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested C-4 rezoning. Item 4, Z-9200, rezoning from R-2 to R-4, 1914 Perry Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested R-4 rezoning. Item number 5, Z-9201, rezoning from R-2 to R-4, 2105 Perry Street. Staff recommends approval of the R-4 rezoning. Item number 7, Z-9203, 7618 Colonel Glenn Road Beauty Salon Conditional Use Permit, 7618 Colonel Glenn Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested CUP as proposed. And item 9, Z-8168B, Redeemer Community Church Conditional Use Permit Time Extension, 11512 David O'Donnell Road. Staff recommends approval of a one-time, two-year extension of the conditional use permit subject to compliance with all previously approved conditions. That concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Steph. Do we have a motion on the bylaw waivers?
Yes, I would, I'd like to move for approval of the bylaw waiver to defer items number 1, 1.1, and 1.2 to the May 11th hearing.
My second.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the bylaw waivers for the items 1, 1.1, 1.2. Those approved, sign if I by raising the right hand. Those opposed? Bylaw waivers approved. Now on consent agenda.
Thank you. I move for approval of the consent agenda with all staff recommendations and comments.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve the consent agenda as read by staff with all staff recommendations. Those approved, sign if I by raising the right hand. Those who do not? All right, consent agenda has been approved. If you are here for items 1 or 1.1 or 1.2, that has been deferred to May 11th, so you're no longer required to stay here, if you like, and keep in mind that that will be heard at May 11th. And then we'll move on with the regular agenda.
Just to follow up on the consent agenda, the two items on the regular agenda, we have item 6, Stanley Phillips Duplexes Conditional Use Permit, and item 8, Village at the Gateway
Item number 6 is file number Z-9199 Stanley Phillips Duplexes Conditional Use Permit. Located at the northwest corner of West 40th and Gilman Streets, conditional use permit is requested to allow for the construction of two duplex residential structures. It's a total of four units on these four R-3 zoned lots. The property does consist of four platted lots that front onto Gilman Street, and the request would include the replating of those four lots into two lots with a single duplex on each of the, each of the lots. The, each structure will contain 2,640 square feet divided into two 1,320 square foot units. Structures will be one-story in height with vinyl siding and a hip roof clad with asphalt shingles. Structures will have a 25-foot front yard setback with Gilman Street being the front yard. All other required setbacks will exceed code requirements. A six-space paved parking lot will be located behind the southern structure with access off of West 40th Street. This was done at the request of the neighborhood that there not be a sea of parking located in front of the structures, but that you would have the driveway and parking located behind. It would have a more appealing appearance on the front. The replat and the bill of assurance will include provisions specifically addressing and maintaining the shared parking arrangement since the parking spaces will all be on the southern lot, but it will be shared by the two lots. The number of parking spaces does comply with the city code requirement, which is one and a half spaces per unit. Each parking space will be specifically identified by unit number either by pavement marking or other signage. Staff is supportive of the proposed CUP. The proposed new duplex residences should be a positive addition to the neighborhood. The total of four units is what is permitted by the existing four-lot configuration today. The 1907 Bill of Assurance and Platte for John Barrow Edition does not address use issues. Staff recommends approval of the requested CUP subject to compliance with the following conditions: first being compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in Sections 4, 5, and 6 of the Agenda staff report; secondly, the replat and bill of assurance must include provisions addressing and maintaining the shared parking arrangement between the two lots; and each parking space must be specifically identified by unit number either by pavement marking or other signage. You were given a copy of a letter from the John Barrow Neighborhood Association, which we did receive and which the Neighborhood Association voiced non-support for this application.
Thank you, Dana. Do we have the applicant here? State your name, and if you'd like to speak now or hear the concerns of the neighbor? First?
I'll speak second.
Okay. All right. Okay. Carol? Carolyn, excuse me.
I answer it.
Sorry.
Commissioner Berry, Vice Commissioner, and other commissioners and city staff. I am Carolyn Heitman. I'm president for the John Barrow Neighborhood Association, and I'm kind of wearing two hats tonight because I'm president for the association and I also live at the corner of 40th and Walker, which is just like this from this development. I did talk with Mr. Phillips. We've been working on this for quite some time to try to come up with an agreeable arrangement for the positioning of this development. When Mr. Quendich came to our meeting, he presented it, and everyone, everyone was opposed except for myself. Okay. So, anyway, I submitted the letter from the association, and the concerns, you know, there again, and I had these concerns, and Mr. Phillips can tell you, that I prefer one be facing 40th Street, one be facing Gilman Street. I was instructed that that is not an option because of some utility connections and easements and right-of-ways and all this. Another concern is when they have visitors, where are they going to park? They're going to park on the city street. Well, the street now is not wide enough for two cars to get down, let alone, you know, how some of the smaller streets are in our area. I feel that the amendments that he and I discussed, you know, it kind of, kind of fit because I told him I didn't want to be looking at the back of these units, nor did I want to look at my front door and see nothing but a parking lot. So, he agreed that he would have the units facing inward, which is going to be kind of offset or whatever, because it's going to be facing a home that sits on the corner of 40th and Walker across the street from me. So, they will be looking directly into this house. But he did agree that he would have the fronts facing that direction instead of facing the Gilman Street side where we would be looking at the back from 40th and Walker. He also agreed that he would put brick on the side and along the bottom in the front to make the aesthetics a little bit more, you know, compatible to the area. He also told me the other night that he would move the parking area further back north on the property because there's nothing back there but a lot of weeds. So, I mean, a natural habitat is weeds. We used to cut that lot all the time for our kids to practice baseball. So, it's been out there many years vacant, and we would love to see homes built on it, however we understand that's not going to be an option for Mr. Phillips to do. But I do feel that the amendments that he and I discussed would be more feasible, but I still prefer one on 40th and one on Walker to make the aesthetics of that area compatible to all the other homes. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Heitman. Okay, the applicant, please.
My name is Stanley Phillips, and as you can tell, I have been over backwards. I love Ms. Heitman. She's a great lady, and I try to get along with everybody. There's no sewer lines. Some things you just can't have. So, I've worked with Ms. Heitman on different projects, and I've worked to be a good neighbor and good builder in the neighborhood, and what she has, we've compromised is okay with me. I'm quite okay, and as y'all probably know, I do everything I say I'm going to do. And I have tried to work with them, and work with them, and work with them. But it's okay. I mean, I'm a part of the neighborhood, and I care about the neighborhood, and I, Ms. Heitman and I are good friends, and I'm going to have this one have more curve appeal. I've talked to Doris Wright about it, and she has now been in some of my units. She's supportive of what I'm doing, and so I want to continue, and I want to continue to be a positive influence, and I work with them as much as I can, but some things I'm, you can't have, you know, just like all this no, you can't, if there's no sewer line, you just can't connect. So, that's why I did it like that, and everything that she said, I'm going to do.
I think we need to know what you're amending your application to.
It's simple. It's not very much. All I'm going to do is...
Press the commission.
Oh.
Tell us specifically what the amendments are to what we're seeing right now.
Okay. I'm going to give it more curve appeal. Instead of being all vinyl, I'm going to put some brick on it.
What sides?
The front.
Where's the front?
The front. Those are actually, yeah, that's actually the porches right there. Those are the porches. I've talked to the city inspector and everything, and he told me all I need to do is put the addresses on the back and the front so that it can be identified from the street, and that will qualify and be acceptable. I'm just going to make them face the way she wanted them to face.
So, the, what we see now is they, you are, we will orient them towards Gilman Street?
Yes.
Okay. Now, the parking, as we see now, is what you're going to do, or are you going to move that further north?
I'm going to go back some, a little bit more to get it back.
Could you, tell me how many feet you will be changing that to?
Oh.
Or generally?
Maybe...
For the record.
Another 10 or 15 feet.
Okay. Anything else, Steph? We need to clarify?
See, the brick, moving the parking. Was there anything else?
I don't think so.
You were going to do a little more landscaping? You possibly would change the color because I'm talking, we can do all the windows.
Yeah, they're going to be a bit... See what I'm talking about? Can I, see what I'm talking about? Whatever she wants.
I want one basically.
No, I can't give you that one. I can't bring the sky in here. Can't do that one. But they're going to have shutters on them. They're going to have more curve appeal, and they're going to be a different color.
All right. I think we have enough specific, Steph, that y'all comfortable with what's been presented? Okay. Any questions from commissioners? Oh, yes, Commissioner Latour.
Well, I guess the only thing going through my mind is, if you're driving down Gilman Street, I see the front of all the houses, and all of a sudden I come to the back of these.
Yeah, they'll be facing, yeah. They will have the back facing Gilman, and the front facing the other way. Can't, you know...
Man, I haven't...
They're going to be looking nice. They're going to be looking nice. They're going to be looking nice.
Is it going to look like the back of a house?
Well, somebody going to get the back of the house. I mean, I mean, you want to, you, it don't make me no difference. See, I'm easy, huh?
Okay.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Leahy? Yeah, go ahead.
You said something about no sewer lines. Is that true? There's no sewer?
Yes, sir. You told me a long time ago, tell people the truth. There's no sewer line running down 40th Street. It runs down Gilman, down there, and then it jumps.
You can't get in the sewer though with these houses.
Sir?
You can sewer these houses.
The way they're orientated now, yes, sir. There's a water line running down Gilman right in that 20-foot radius, and there's a sewer line running down there. I've had one dig out there. I've located everything out there.
The commissioners? Commissioner Stebbins?
I have one. You said the parking spaces were going to be numbered, so would it be like 1, 2, 3, 4, and then guest-guest?
No. But, yeah, well, what they're going to be is they're going to be, until we actually get the permit and everything, they give me an address, they're going to be addressed. You're going to have four, you're going to have four spots that'll be designated and two spots that can catch, everybody's not going to have two cars.
Right.
But that generally works.
Okay. Staff had some clarifications.
Back to the brick, and maybe we missed it, but what facades, and on whether they're on both of the structures are on the...
Yes, sir.
The south side, the west side?
They're going to be in the front.
What's the, the west?
West side.
West side. Facing...
That way.
Okay.
That way doesn't help. You left West Street.
That's west. That's west. What about on the south?
Ah, sir?
Facing 40th.
Ah...
I thought you told me you would put them...
No, I didn't say that. No, wait a minute. They're going to be, they're going to be on the front. They're going to be on the front. They're going to look very nice. I'm going to put brick. I had, I didn't bring it with me, and it was a, basically, just all this no expense. You only have so many dollars, but I didn't mind spending more dollars to make them nicer. And I had talked with Doris about it, about more curve appeal in her, and they're going to be like maybe 10 feet off the windows. So, I'm in the middle. It's going to really look nice.
Steph, are you getting the answers you need?
I'm just hearing on the west side of both.
Right.
Right. What is going to be front.
Right.
That's all.
What you're saying is on the Gilman side, there's, it's vinyl.
Sir?
On the Gilman side, the east, the right, it's vinyl?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, Commissioner May.
Mr. Latour and I are up in years. Explain to me again why you have to face them the back to Gilman.
Ms. Heitman, and trying to work with everybody involved and the neighbors, they felt like they would be better orientated that way. Just being honest with you.
You've got parking in front of the houses...
Yes, sir.
That face west.
Yes, sir.
The sewer's not a problem facing the other way. Is it just the, the people around it want it faced to the west rather than to the east?
Somebody help me out here. Somebody help me out.
Well, I guess my question would go both to the developer and staff. As a developer, how would you lay this out?
How would I lay it out? Actually, I would have, I would have, just like what makes sense to us, I would have pointed them toward Gilman. I would have had the front of it toward Gilman. But trying to, you know, work with everybody else.
From, from a staff perspective, would, what would be more appropriate in a big picture as opposed to...
Obviously, excuse me, to maintain the block face of Gillum. You know, that, that, that's, that's the natural orientation of, these are east-west lots. So, if, Walter, if you can show the, like, the zoning area, those houses to the north, their, their nat, their fronts face Gillum. So, that's, to us, that's, would be maintaining that block face.
Commissioners?
Can you go back to the, the last slide? So, we can all, what, what I don't understand is why units 3 and 4 can't face Gillum. The parking that's behind units 1 and 2 be flipped to the western side of that drive and then flip 1 and 2 where it faces 40th?
There is no sewer line going down 40. The sewer line runs down Gillium. Right down Gillium, and the water runs that way. There is no connect, there's no sewer line running down 40th, so if you turn it, you can't hit it. I need those buildings pointed, and I need them orientated right there so that I can make that connection. You understand?
No, I mean, I, we run sewer lines all the time. I don't, I mean, because your, your building is going to be, it's not, if you just rotate it, it's still going to have a similar footprint, just 2 is going to be just to the west of 1, if you, if you follow what I'm saying. So, I don't, are you, are you going to have, are you connecting from, is the sewer connection going to be connecting into 1 and 2, or are you going to have two sewer connections for each unit?
Each, 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 by law, they have to, they have to each connect.
It has its own sewer connection.
They cannot be a community sewer line. They have to, all of them have to join in and run into it.
It's each unit, not each structure?
Right. Right. I'm going to write, each, each one got his own line.
But even then, I still, I agree with staff, and I don't understand...
I'll turn them, I mean, I was just really trying to appease...
I think if you're on the, the eastern side of Gilman, then you're, you're looking at the back of that house, and that's just very odd to me.
I can turn them, I, I have no problem, whatever, you know, you guys want, whatever we need to do.
Commissioner Latour?
I guess I'm a little perplexed and upbeat an engineer, is why you can't take 1 and 2 and have them face 40th Street.
I agree.
I mean, you're running a sewer to the corner of the house, why can't you run a sewer to the corner of the house? You still got sewer to the house.
One second. He can do that.
You move your parking up north, turn to 1 so it faces 40th, and everybody ought to be relatively happy.
But could you run it across, do you run it across the sideline? That's the only difference here. He'd be coming across the sideline.
What'd you think? We, we had some problems with the setbacks, and we had, you know, we had some problems getting, getting it. We, we turned them all kinds of ways. We've looked at it before. Can I take a moment and talk to Wood and Deach? One second.
Because we looked at orienting them things, and some of our configurations didn't work. What do you think? Can we do that? Would it fit? Can we fit that? We can fit that.
We can turn. But there was a reason why we didn't do that.
I don't recall. My name is Quendich. I just do site planning. I don't do architecture on this project, just helping with site planning. 1 and 2 could be rotated clockwise. 3 and 4 could have the entrance, the frontage on Gilman Street. 1 and 2 could be rotated clockwise where the entrance would be on 40th Street. Parking could be shifted over to the west a little bit and shifted north a little bit.
Yeah.
If that's, that's what...
Okay. When we get ready to come out of there to get, there is no sewer line on 40th Street, so you got to turn it this way.
Unit 2 will be on the, unit 2, 1 facing 40th, 1 facing Gilman.
Okay.
Unit 2, when you shift it, when you turn it clockwise...
Okay.
It would be near the sewer line on Gilman Street. The surface of unit 1, it's going to be a few more feet to get to it.
So, so...
If you have them, they'll have a longer stretch.
I'm okay with that. You can tell. I'm like...
So, now, okay, everyone is confused. And we're, we're going to have, excuse me, Commissioner Hamilton? Go ahead.
Oh, I guess, to that point, I guess this is a question for staff. If the 1 and 2, units 1 and 2 were rotated clockwise, is there anything that prohibits the sewer running across the sideline from Gillum into those structures? Is that, is that a allowable...
I, we cannot answer that question. We're kind of wondering how the houses on the south side of 40th are sewered.
They jump, the sewer, they jump. I've traced all the lines in that area. Hers on the corner goes down 40th. 40th and Walker.
Talk to them.
Oh.
Mr. Phillips, I'd kind of make a suggestion. There's, if we vote up or down on this application, it may fail, and...
Okay.
There you are. I don't know, the feeling of the commissioners is, y'all need to go back and do... there you are. Uh, I don't know if the feeling of the commissioners is y'all need to go back and do some work and make this a little more straightforward. Um.
I don't have a problem turning them. Every, I don't have a problem turning them. One building facing Fortieth, one facing Gillium, I'll make it work.
Well, I mean, there's some questions that we can't answer here. If, if you turn it a certain way, there might be some setback issues and other issues. So either we either vote on this, you know, straight up or down, or we go back, uh, and vote another time with a different, uh, design.
Defer it.
Yeah, I gotta, I wanna ask.
What, so it's staff? What you're saying?
Uh, our suggestion, I mean, since it's been going back and forth, back, we don't have really any resolution. Our recommendation, if Mr. Phillips is thinking of redesigning the site plan, that it needs to be deferred so we can look at everything. We, you know, we, we would not be able to make a recommendation on somebody saying, I'm gonna turn it
I understand.
without seeing the specifics, where the parking's gonna be.
Can we take a vote as it is?
You want to vote up or down?
I wanna vote up.
As it is?
As it is.
Okay.
I got a question. Does anybody know what the right of way of Fortieth Street is? And what about Gilman Street? We don't have any right of way showing on the sketch here.
Is it in the staff write-up? Vince?
Since we got in this argument over the sewer line, why don't we get wastewater down here at these meetings?
Okay, what, uh, staff?
The, the rights of way for both streets are forty feet.
Okay. Okay, commissioners, I think we need to, uh, counsel.
My, my recommendation at this point, because we've amended the application so much with the brick and the orientation, he has a question whether or not it can be turned. I would, you know, I would be more comfortable. So, and you're gonna?
Well, sounds like we probably need to defer to win.
Okay.
Okay. So you are asking for a deferral to May eleventh?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Commissioners?
So what, I'm moving for deferral?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I move for the deferral of item six to the May eleventh meeting.
Okay. All those approve of the deferral as, raise your right hand. Those disapprove? Okay. Hopefully we'll come back with a clear product. All right. Item eight. Monty?
Before we go into item eight, I need to know if there's someone here representing that item. I knew the applicant wasn't here, so I need to, so it was here. Item eight is village at the gateway tower use permit. Tower use permit is requested to allow for construction of a hundred and forty-foot tall self-supporting structure uh, on this R-two zoned property. The applicant is requesting approval of the tower use permit to allow for construction of this tower, which would be used to provide wireless internet access to the residents of his subdivision, which he's developing that extends to the east and to the south. The hundred, hundred and forty-foot tall tower will hold one fifteen-pound microwave antenna and up to two ten-pound sector antennas. The tower compound will measure sixteen feet by sixteen feet. It'll be enclosed by an eight-foot tall wood privacy fence. The six-foot wide landscape strip will be located on the outside. This is from the, uh, WCF regulations of the, the zoning ordinance, the requirement for the screening fence and the landscape. Uh, the entire tower site will be located within a fifty-foot by fifty-foot easement. And access to the tower will be by a ten-foot access easement off of one of the streets in the new subdivision. The tower use permit is required because proposed tower is located less than a hundred and forty feet from a budding residential property. The, uh, requirement for placement of the towers, you have the base zoning requirement. In this case, which is the property is zoned R-two, so the, uh, ground equipment and everything has to meet the setbacks that are typical of an R-two zoning district, which for a lot like this would be, most would be twenty-five feet that would be required. But because, uh, some of the abutting properties are zoned residential, you then have a requirement that the tower itself be set back from a budding residential property, at least the height of the tower. And again, so the property to the west is zoned residential. It's a large undeveloped tract. The property to the south and to the east are zoned residential, but those are lots within the subdivision that the tower is being designed to provide service to. The, uh, property to the north is industrial. There is no requirement for setback of the tower from industrial property. Staff is supportive of the requested tower use permit. Uh, the residential properties that are affected by the reduction in the setback, again, are those to the west and to the south and to the east, uh, which are either undeveloped or are owned by the applicant. Staff recommends approval of the tower use permit, subject to compliance with the following conditions. First being compliance with comments and conditions outlined in section four, five, and six of the staff report. Screening and landscaping of the tower site must comply with the provisions of chapter thirty-six, article twelve, which is the WCF regulations. And then any expansion of the tower compound or addition of any WCF carriers does require returning to the planning commission for approval as a revision. There's no proposal to add anyone to the tower other than just what, uh, the applicant, uh, has indicated under this application. But the possibility is, if you have the hundred and forty-foot tall tower out there and as population of the area grows, there may be a need for enhanced cellular service or, uh, other wireless service and the tower is there. We recognize that it might be possible that, uh, the applicant might be approached by a provider wanting to place antenna on the tower. Uh, if that is the case, it has to come back to you for your review and approval.
Thank you. And you say the applicant is here or someone representing the applicant? Uh, could you come out and just state your name? Uh, you don't have to make a presentation. If you would like just to hear the, uh, uh, comments of, uh, Kathy Graves, who, uh, has indicated she's opposed to it, you can wait and address her concerns.
Okay. Yeah, my name's Ashley Bys and I'm a staff civil engineer for Big Rock Development.
Okay.
And, uh, yeah, I would like to hear her comments.
Okay. Kathy?
Hi, I'm Kathy Graves. I appreciate you guys listening to us tonight. I love Little Rock, so I really appreciate all y'all's time here. Um, my family has lived on that and worked on that five-acre piece of property just to the north of the tower for over fifty years. Every day, we're out there. My son, my dad's ninety-four. He's living at Briarwood Nursing Home now, or he would be right here talking to you folks. But, um, we're a little concerned that the developer chose to put it where he chose to put it. We're all for, you know, the development of Little Rock, but, uh, I'm wondering if there's some alternative possible placement of the tower rather than this close to our little piece of property. We've already been negatively impacted by this development. Our property has sat there peacefully and quietly and this thirty-five acres has been under development for approximately a year now. And we've been broken into three times, our vehicles predominantly, and we know they're coming through this development because it's juvenile sort of vandalism. They're coming into our vehicles and stealing cell phones and shooting off fire extinguishers and throwing them up into the trees. And there's not three or four hundred people living there, which when this is developed, I assume that's what we're gonna be looking at. And I'm all for development. But there's no fencing around this project. There's some fencing, I'm sure, around the tower, I think I heard him say. But, um, I'm really concerned about just the, the value of our property in light of this tower and the development as a whole. Um, I think fences make good neighbors. And in light of this, in light of them asking us to accept an additional, in my opinion, uh, decline in the value of our property, um, I'm just concerned about what the, their choice of placement. There's thirty-five acres there. They, they could have put that tower somewhere else. There's a lot of undevelopment property at the south, the, the southwest. Let me see if I'm getting my, yes, the south, what, the southwest corner is a lot more undevelopment, a lot more undeveloped than the corner they've chosen, you know, as close to us as they have. My family's gonna be there for the next thirty, forty years. I don't know what the decline in these towers, the maintenance, the liability, the potential damage, the potential problems associated with these towers. I'm, I'm ignorant, honestly. But I, 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 do any of us honestly want to live under a hundred and forty-foot tower of anything? I don't. I don't want to work under one either. Uh, the developer obviously has, you know, it's, it's beneficial to his project. I understand that. But I, I don't understand the placement on the back of our property. If, if there's a potential alternative, I really would appreciate them considering it. Thank you.
Thank you. Would like to come up and, uh, address our concerns.
I'll have to be honest with you. I'm not sure why they put it there. I've worked for Big Rock for about twelve days now, so I'm just getting in on the, um, the, uh, fun, I guess. So I'm not sure how the placement of that tower would be, uh, would cause a property value to decrease in that corner, uh, which was her concern. Um, it'll be, um, a minimalistic tower. It's a hundred and forty feet tall, which is not a huge cell tower. It'll hold two to four, uh, small microwave items to, uh, broadcast wifi for the development. I don't, I mean, I don't know how to explain that, uh, the plan was for them to develop western. So if they were to put it down there in the bottom, it would be in the middle of their development as opposed to, you know, on the outskirts of, of their development.
Commissioners, questions, comments?
I got some questions.
Commissioner Lahey?
I wish this gentleman, representative owner, was a path engineer and he could tell us a whole lot more about it. And my limited experience a long time ago in communications is that they could put that tower someplace else. I'll agree with Ms. Graves on that, that they could put that tower someplace else and still get, uh, serviced to everybody in there. So I'm gonna be opposed to that installation.
Can you point to where her property is, please, Ms. Graves' property is? The, okay. That's what I thought.
It's industrial. Other commissioners? Thoughts, comments? Not?
What is she zoned right now? Industrial?
Industrial. Commissioner May?
Just a comment. My neighborhood has one and we were concerned and it's behind a church. Where my folks lived, neighborhood, and it was behind a church. Well, the church on Mississippi and Markham now has a cross on top of theirs and they use it as part of the church. The one in my neighborhood, quite frankly, it was, uh, where I used to live. I said, well, if it falls, it'll fall on us. Well, they don't fall. They'll, you'll have trees fall long before. And they keep it well, very well landscaped and I've forgotten it's there, quite frankly. And as far as you being industrial, I would guess it would raise the property value. I have no way of knowing, but, um, it certainly, certainly won't hurt because they're just part of the landscape anymore and they maintain them very well. Just a comment.
Oh, staff?
Available to answer any questions? I heard the question asked regarding, uh, the property to the north. It is industrial. Uh, it's a concrete burial vault manufacturing company. And it's an industrial yard with concrete materials on it. Uh, there is no requirement of this, that the tower be set back any more than twenty-five feet from that property to the north, which is the base zoning.
Commissioner Stebbins?
So if they were to move the tower, would they have to redo the plat? I mean, as it is today?
Uh, if, if they were to consider moving the tower, they'd have to, refile a, a different site plan with us to go back through staff review and, uh, subdivision committee and come back to you.
Commissioner Bubas? I miss?
Question, be, to be sure, it's yes or no. Y'all don't live on the property, do you? Just?
Commissioner Bubas?
I wanna move for, you ready? I move for the approval of item eight with all staff recommendations and comments.
Here's a second. We have a motion to approve the application. My staff recommendations, uh, those approve, raise your right hand. And those who do not approve, raise your right hand. What was the vote on that?
Nine ayes and two noes.
Application passes. Okay. We are at the point of citizens communication. Do we hear anyone here for citizens communication? Ms. Bell not being here, we stand adjourned.